Time to get into the session for our budget meeting. Um, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, six P M as advertised. Uh, George Kiko here with Tom Keith, trustee Jennifer Leon, Todd Bosley, uh, our fiscal officer. And, uh, I guess we'll just kind of, I don't know if you guys wanna go down line item, line item and talk about the budget.
Yeah, that's good with me. So this is not the budget I did.
We revised it, yes.
Okay, so do you wanna take it from there?
Uh, well, my main questions were the salaries. I wanted those broke out. So we had, um, each account with how we take the salaries because we take like the road out of different line items. So that's what this is for.
Okay.
Basically, that this is the breakdown of
Where it comes from.
how we get our funds.
Okay.
So for the trustees, the fiscal officer, the fiscal officer staff, um, and then they're broke out.
What would the other salaries be then?
That's what I'm getting to.
Okay.
Yeah, like so motor vehicle, that twenty thousand, that's for the road department. Gasoline tax, the fifty-four thousand, that's the road department.
Okay.
Uh, the fifty-five thousand, that's the road department. And then the fire district, the five-seventy-five, uh, that is the fire, uh.
District fund?
Yes, and the five-seventeen-five is dispatch.
Okay.
Okay? And then seventy thousand, the twenty-one forty-one road district fund, we would pull salaries out of there. Because we take salaries out of all these different funds for the road. That's really the most complicated one. Same with the, the license and then the Carers Act. Um, and then you get down here to fire EMS. There's another one sixty-five in salaries there that are taken out of there. So basically, the dispatch is five hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred a year. Fire department salaries total seven hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. And then the general fund salaries total one forty-seven, five forty-eight. So that's the very last page.
Okay.
So you see.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. Sounds nice.
So it really spells it out. So we could really, you know, because when the, when we see the budget, we can't look at totals. You know, because all these, all of these are just line item salaries.
Right.
And you don't know exactly. Yeah, so that was just a way to break it out so you guys could see.
Okay.
Exactly what we're paying. Cause now you, now you know, oh, we pay five seventeen in dispatch. We pay, you know, seven hundred and forty for fire.
Okay.
So those are good numbers. You know what I mean?
Yes.
You can answer questions if you get a question, so. And then we had just moved around some supplies. There were some, uh, accounts where contract services, um, in the general fund, we spent almost fifty thousand in two thousand twenty-two. And then there was only like thirty-two thousand appropriated. So we just adjusted those things, basically. It was just making sure that we, if we spent it in two thousand twenty-two, we wanted to make sure we had that much appropriate.
Budget for two thousand twenty-three.
Exactly. And some of them were taken out, like re- employee reimbursements. We didn't feel we had not a dollar come out in two thousand twenty-two. So we don't need the twenty-eight hundred, so. And we still have, once we do approve it, we can do, you know, amendments.
Well, that's what I wanna say about budgets. They're just, they're just totally in action. I mean, it's, it's fun accounting. And so what you do is you look at the last couple of years and you try to guess basically where you're gonna be. Now, like with fire dispatch, um, when you look at that, we've been paying overtime for some of the dispatchers cause we've been short. So theoretically, we shouldn't have as much expense in that this year.
Hopefully, right.
If we, if, yeah, as long as we can hire the right people. So it's, you know, budgets are, I, I guess it's one of those things. Nobody's right, nobody's wrong. It's just that if, if, and nobody can predict what's gonna happen. So if we miss on something, we just have to do transfer. The important thing, I think, though, is that we're two million dollars under the amount of money that we have available to spend.
Absolutely.
And that's.
For the year.
Yeah, so it's, you know, the, the, I did a budget and then you guys did a budget and then we came somewhere in the middle on most of it.
Yeah, so like basically, um, let me get to it. So our budget came in at four point one two, four million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven forty-four. But we have six million, four fifty-nine.
Coming in potentially.
Well, are we, we have.
Expected.
Yeah, but we also have the current, we have the American Rescue Plan Act and that money that's not in this budget. And we also have, what we have almost two million in reserves.
Yeah.
That we just, we don't spend. It just kind of accumulates. So that's a good thing is.
There's a copy. That, the auditor certifies the amount of money that he thinks we're gonna have.
Okay.
Okay, but that means everybody has to pay the real estate taxes and gas taxes have to continue. So there's always a variable to it. Nothing is guaranteed when you see these numbers.
Okay, so that's six point four million dollars. Is that nine hundred thousand with the, the carers money in there, you think?
We've spent, we, we only have five hundred left. We only have five hundred left, but yeah, that's what we don't spend that we carry over from year to year. So that, that would consider that like our savings, you know what I mean? So we're running a four point one million budget and we have six point four in, in, um, in funds. What was I gonna go ahead and question?
Got a couple of things I wanted to.
I just lost my thought.
In Todd's budget, he had insurance benefits. And it was, uh, I just wanted to check that one because on his budget, my credit wasn't that great, so apologize.
Yeah, it's okay. This is like a crosswalk.
Yeah.
We haven't gotten a new insurance reach yet, right?
We haven't gotten them yet?
No.
Okay.
I think, I thought we did.
Did, I thought I'm asking, did we?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, yeah, for, they, they changed in June or July. There's a slight in, increase.
Okay. I just sent the C notes.
Yeah, I thought we all got them. Well, we'll have to check the emails cause I thought we were all.
So part of this, George, is you're just trying to guess basically where you think you'll be.
Yeah.
Regardless of what the item is.
Contracted services, where do we, what, what, what is typically in under contracted services?
Are you talking in the general fund?
Yeah, that.
It could be salt, it could be.
It's, uh, two, uh, twenty-one eleven, two ninety, three sixty.
That's the, uh, twenty-one eleven is the fire district.
Okay.
So that would be whatever that they buy, supplies they buy.
Okay. They've won it out. Supplies won't.
Did you ask? No, no, it would be people that didn't need to do work for certain things or.
Okay.
Yeah, a hundred percent service would be our painting.
Okay.
Would be that.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the confusing part about budgets. So George, you have like, you know, all the one thousands is the general fund. And then there's, you know, salaries and there's different salaries within even the same budget.
Right, right, twenty-one eleven.
Yeah, what I cheat is I look them up and say, this is the motor vehicle, this is the gas, this is the roads.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Till you memorize the account, but always one thousand's the general fund.
Okay.
Um, I know the question I wanna ask. The money we made from ambulance runs, where does that get factored in?
It back into the fire department.
Do you, is that a separate? That's what I was curious.
Yeah, um, twenty, twenty-two eighty-one, which would be ambulance and emergency medical service.
Okay, and that's what?
That's what we're able to collect. I mean, just because we run the call doesn't mean we always get paid. We send the.
Correct, but our dispatch contracts, where do those fall in? Um, those are monthly checks.
I don't, I don't have the exact thing with me. I think it's twenty-one eleven.
Okay, so that's included in this amended certificate of estimated resources?
Yes.
That's what I was curious is what's, what the breakout?
Well.
Like, cause we do technically make money.
I, I did want to say to the board, um, and I, and I sincerely mean this when I say it. I think you guys did a good job working on this budget. And this budget helps you understand how the whole process works. It helps you understand how complicated it is and why you could sometimes, you know, it's sometimes for us in our office, we have to figure out where to put money that comes in, what account does it go in, and what code and all of that. So, um, so it i- it is complicated, but to take it a step further for you, you guys did this budget. Now you'll get the opportunity again in July to do what they call the tax budget. And that is super complicated.
Right.
That's the hardest budget of the year. But that breaks out where everything is. And I think if you guys did that one, that'll give you a really even better understanding. Um, thi- this is kinda easy, sort of in a way, because you're just saying, okay, you know, last year, we spent four point three million dollars.
Right.
So this year, even though inflation is higher, I think maybe we could spend four point one, or maybe we won't. You know what I mean? It's hard to say. So it's just a guess.
Yeah, cause we haven't decided what equipment we're buying.
Right.
This year or not.
Yeah, so what I did with, I'm sorry.
Oh, go for it, no.
Well, I, when I, when I build the budget, just because we have a budget does not mean we're gonna spend the money. So if we have a hundred dollars in the budget, it's just there in case you guys decide you need it. But I know my budget came in at like four point three and yours came in at like four point one. It doesn't make either of us right or wrong. It's just that if, if we go over on one of those accounts, then we have to go through the whole process of transfers and bring it before the board and all that. So the way I was taught to do budgets is just build it for what you think it'll be, but don't get above what you think you may have.
Right.
And so I think we've got a good cushion because we still have, you know, a couple of million dollars expected. So it doesn't put us in a jam. It's, you know, some townships, they run within, you know, fifty thousand dollars. It can get real tricky.
Right. Some, some townships don't wanna carry any debt. I know, talk to Washington Township. I don't, you guys carry, does like anything carry much debt?
Totally.
They don't like to do it. They don't want to, you know?
Yeah.
It's, with inflation, the price of things, it's hard not to carry some debt.
I think we may have one remaining lease payment on a truck. Maybe you've leased some of your trucks.
We have, I think we have one.
That's not a bad program.
Yeah.
Yeah, once a year, we make payments once a year or every month.
Yeah, there you go, George, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So on equipment, I was looking at the equipment and I guess that, would that be firing into the twenty-one eleven, seven sixty?
Let me hand you this, George.
Machinery equipment.
That's the, that's the piece from the county. So if you look, you can see like twenty-one eleven will show you.
Oh, fine, okay.
Yeah, and then if you look across, that'll show you the maximum amount that we have to allocate.
Okay.
Far right number.
Okay.
And that's, the county auditor gives us that to tell us the maximum amount we could allocate if we wanted to.
For each fund.
But, you know, we're on the ice if we go too far.
Right, well, we don't wanna do that. Where do, where does it show our cash on hand?
Um, I don't think these reports show that. That's a, that's a separate report that you guys should get in your, you know, your monthly reports.
Right.
Your weekly reports.
Yeah, I don't have one.
We can get that for you, though.
And do we have it all sitting in Huntington? We have the star account?
Star, yeah, split about between.
Okay.
About half and half.
So do we need to worry about that with any bank things right now?
Who are you talking about?
I can't answer their question.
I know, rough, rough question, yeah.
Signature Bank and what was Silicon Valley Bank?
Does F D I C apply to government entities? Cause it's only two fifty per account.
No, you're technically.
Are we, are we?
You're just a depositor.
Still?
Like everybody else.
Yeah. You don't get anything special.
So would that be definitely something we're kinda hoping for?
You know, if, if, if you wanted to be ultra-conservative and protective, I suppose the best advice would be to follow where you're kinda going, which is to separate it.
That may be an opportunity too to get lower bank fees if we.
Yeah, we gotta stay with Huntington because they are our lending partner.
Yeah.
Number one, you can just call them and we're set up. Number two, we can offset those bank charges the more we use our credit card. Cause the credit card, you can get a substantial rebate to offset the monthly.
Okay.
So if you would write less checks with the people we can, we can offset that. I don't wanna cut it with Huntington because they, they're very responsive. We need money, they just, they just handle it. Uh, the other thing too, what was it, what was Huntington making? Oh, our credit card, we have to have our account tied to the credit card cause it's due every twenty days.
Right.
So it, and it has to be automatic or you can't get the credit card. So we can't disrupt.
That's right.
You know, we don't have to have every dollar there.
Right.
But we can.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, maybe look at busting it up. So are we allowed to have certificates of deposit or is there rules?
There's a, there's a list of permissible investments that you're allowed to use. Do you have any investments right now?
Star, star, yeah.
That's what a lot of people utilize.
I mean, there weren't, there was not really any interest being paid for many years. So it's, you know, there wasn't a lot of options. I think there's more options now and it's probably a good time to be looking at that kinda stuff. So you guys could explore who you wanna work with.
Okay, are there restrictions on the types of instruments? Like we, if not, you can't buy like treasury, you know, like, you know what I mean, like?
Although, and I don't know how much news publicity has been given, that Silicon Valley Bank was an authorized entity to invest with. For instance, the state teachers' retirement invested in it.
That's why they got kinda hoopers.
I don't know how much they lost, but I know there are some state entities that lost money. And even though they're authorized, it doesn't mean they're necessarily vetted as being safe. So.
That was with coin gate too with Ohio, wasn't it? The teacher's thing was coin gate.
Best in ever coins.
Yeah, all their pension, much of their pension.
So you have to independently kind of evaluate what your safety level is.
Yeah, so we need to add to evaluate that.
I mean, there's consumer banks in town, Chase is in town.
Chase is a great one.
You know, we got really a lot of options for small town. Huntington's, they were in town, but they're in lines. It's not that far, so it's something we may look into, but.
We just need to work with the auditor.
Make sure.
Yeah, because like if we could find an instrument we could invest in, like at Chase that paid a decent interest rate, but we would have the flexibility to be able to pull it back when we needed to.
Yeah, like a money market.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's kinda like what we're dealing with right now. You know, we have a half a million dollar of the rescue funds.
We should lock that up, yeah. We can, they do like a monthly C D where it just renews every month. They, they, I don't know if they still do, but they used to a C, a seven-day C D. It's a lower rate and it just rolls over in case you need the money and, you know what I mean, you would, you do it on the eighth day or whatever, so.
Yeah, I mean, money markets right now, there's some that still do them. They're like four percent, four point two.
Right.
Pretty easy.
They're coming up there now. They used to be nothing.
Yeah, zero, zero, zero.
Yeah, one, oh, 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 five, one.
Okay, so, um, so what would we do to do, do, to do that?
I would wanna call, I wanna call the auditor and he'll send me some information. So let me write a note to do that. He'll, uh, he'll, listen, Jim was talking about he'll send.
Send it to us, okay. That would be great. Tom, do you have anything?
I just, I just wanted to discuss my budget part of it. If you guys have time to talk about it.
Sure.
So I, and my budget, I had requested thirty-six thousand dollars and I noticed on the budget that you guys did, it came, you guys gave me twenty for what we're trying to do. Um, the only thing that I want the board, um, to understand is that there are some things that are going on that we may need some money for. And as an elected official, I have to have the ability to be able to run the office the way I see fit. That, you know, every year I've come in below budget, but I have two scenarios that are going on right now that I have to address. The first is the records cleanup. I think there probably will be some expenses there that I'll need to plan for. And my, my secondary expense is that, um, the, my assistant who works there, she's be, starting to begin a plan her retirement. So I need to bring somebody in like a day a week to start learning that job before we get to, you know, where somebody's ready to just leave. Well, she's not there yet, but this job is extremely hard. I know you've heard me say that a lot, but it really does take a year or two to learn. I, really everything you have going on. So I think that my request is reasonable. It's, I'm not saying we're even gonna use that much. I don't know that we are, but I need to have those funds available in case I need them for those two reasons.
Is, is, um, how, how, how much do you, does your office rely? Like on Mary Ellen?
Well, I brought that paperwork for you. Um, let me, let me explain about that.
Yeah, I know during COVID.
Yeah.
And we talked about that. She was helping, you know, whenever you couldn't reach people at the state level.
I know, but I don't think that's really gonna portray you guys the right way. And I want, I wanna make sure that you guys understand who Mary Ellen is and what she does for our office.
Great, well, the, the original intention when we hired Mary Ellen, if you remember, was we were gonna have to pay the state a certain amount of money for training. And you said, hey, we have this lady available. We can do a training with her. And then it, after we, we spent our first twenty-four hundred dollars, you came back and said, hey, COVID, 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 still haven't really got it. We're having trouble reaching people. We gave another twenty-four hundred. Then the last time, we gave five thousand and, and that was with the understanding, and it's always been training. So what has been portrayed to us is this is training. And from my perspective, with, with money spent on admin, if you're paying a trainer and, and then you've spent ten thousand on training and the office still isn't at a functioning level, then was it for training or was it for subcontracting services? Or is the people lack the ability to be trained? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Well, I don't think anybody lacks the ability to be trained. And that's why I wanted to, wanted you guys to get the full understanding of where I'm at. So when I came into the fiscal office, I didn't understand one of these things. And that is prior, and I'm not gonna get into names, this was prior to me being there, prior to me being your fiscal officer. We used to have an audit and that audit was done by agreed-upon procedures. Have you guys ever heard of that? Yeah, yeah. Agreed-upon procedures. So what they would do is they would come in because the records were clean and good, they would only test cer- certain portions. The agreed-upon procedures is much less expensive than what we're into now, which is full-blown audits. That didn't start with me, but again, there's no reason to get into that. So when Mary Ellen came along, it probably the worst time you could become a fiscal officer because none of the offices were open and you couldn't get ahold of anybody. We started to utilize her, but as soon as I saw that we needed her more, we took, and remember, before I became the fiscal officer, we had a person who worked five days a week as a full-time fiscal assistant. My person went to four days a week. So now we've cut fifty-two days of employment off. And I thought, because I'm trying to get the township back where it needs to be and I care about where I live and where I work, that we have to get back to agreed-upon procedures. So that was basically what I started to do. I wanna get us back to that. Because we can take our audit costs down like ten thousand dollars a year compared to what we're paying now. We're paying like fifteen. But I did bring this for you to take a look at. That's the expenses for Mary Ellen last year, which was one thousand dollars, and this year is about three hundred bucks. What Mary Ellen does for us, though, is she doesn't train us. She helps us get, she's helping us get all of the corrections done so that everything makes sense, so that the audit comes out where there's not any issues. So she's not training us. She works for the state auditor's office. And that's how much money we spent with her and our books, honestly, our books look great.
Uh, something that you don't have the ability to do.
I'm not saying I don't have the ability to do it. I'm saying she works for the state auditor's office. So she's a double-check checker.
Right, I understand that.
Okay, that's how we got in trouble before because we had a one-man show. One-man shows in this business are, you know, as soon as.
I don't think we necessarily got in trouble. I mean, every, every audit gets, gets things. And I remember clearly when we sat down with Brian, we asked him straight off the bat, is there anything egregious here? Anything terrible?
It doesn't have to be that.
It was a clean, it was a clean audit.
But that's a, that's a mischaracterized, mischaracterization of, of what, the difference between an, uh, like you said, egregious and just a, just not a great audit. And if you don't have a great audit, you can't get agreed-upon procedures. So that's what I'm shooting to do. That's where we wanna get back to. But is, I know you guys are focused on Mary Ellen and, and you'd like to use.
Well, we have a payroll service too, Todd. So if you look at it from our perspective, since you've taken office, we've, we spent an extra six to seven thousand a year on payroll. And we're spending ten thou, an additional ten thousand with Mary Ellen, plus your salary, your benefits, your employee.
That payroll system was absolutely necessary. It, it was something that had to happen.
We, we, we functioned with it without, I think it was because if you looked at the job description, which I have here, for the fiscal office, and you and I interviewed together.
Do you remember how we got the payroll system? Do you remember that or not?
I do.
How did we get it?
I do.
Tell me how.
Uh, you and Rich got it, looked into it, taught it.
Rich needs.
Because Rich, but also too, we have forty-five employees at the fire department. I would think we could be, have the ability to cross-train somebody, but that, that's, that's a moot point.
Well, I don't wanna make this personal and I understand it's.
It's not personal, but I do wanna read the job description. See, from my perspective is you, you did, you knew you had the position eight months before we started and you did. So I'm saying if, if I'm the fiscal, if I get the fiscal officer position and I don't know the job and you didn't know the job, I would've taken that eight months.
So you're making it political, Jim.
No, I'm not. I, I'm trying to say, if, if you're stepping up, no, I'm speaking, Todd. You can speak after me. If you have eight months to learn something and you don't take advantage of that time.
That's not true.
And then when you get into the office, you hire someone who didn't meet the basics, the basics. It is, I have the resume, I have the job description.
I told you who I wanted to hire and you said no.
Because of the money, Todd. It was like thirty, it was, it was double the budget.
It was not.
It was.
Yeah, it was pretty high.
It was twenty-four dollars she wanted.
No, it was twen, no, you, she wouldn't accept twenty-five an hour. We were even trying to go up to that. She wanted like thirty dollars an hour. It was a lot. I mean, we, we have a duty not to overspend on admin. We need to pave our roads. We need to have salt in our bins. We need to have compost available, not pay a bunch of people to push paper when we don't need it.
There are certain ru- rules that you're required to meet during the state.
And I, but this is our budget.
Before we take in the office, we have not been meeting those. That's why we don't.
Well, that's your opinion. Okay, here, here are the, here is the job description. Bachelor's degree in business or accounting preferred. That is not, we did not have that. Minimum of five years experience in finance administration, zero. Preferred experience in government fund accounting, okay, preferred, but zero. Qualified applicants must have the ability to be bonded. Bingo, we got one. Last one, notary public. We still not, don't have that.
You guys told me you wouldn't pay more than eighteen dollars an hour.
But Todd, we interviewed, we, we.
Maybe a year twenty?
Twenty fifty, but we interviewed Brian, myself and Todd. We spent hours and we interviewed probably twenty-five candidates. We had people that solely did payroll, did fund accounting. And you, this, and we let you hire who you wanted and we approved it.
I don't really understand your point, like where you're going.
My point is that you hired somebody who didn't meet the, the basic qualification of the job and now you want the taxpayer to compensate.
I think that's.
The inability.
That's awful to see something like that.
It's not. It's, it's true. It's like hiring an E M T. I know she has. It's not about, it's not personal. It is professional.
Sounds personal.
Well, it's not. It's like hiring an E M T that doesn't know CPR. It's a hiring a, a driver for the road department. It doesn't have a C D L. We have to hire a driver. That is the real issue. I'm not, I think you need to make adjustments in your office to work that out. Because we have increased the money we spend with the payroll service. These are real expenses.
What, uh, so what did we spend last year with Mary Ellen?
Thousand dollars.
Total, for the whole year?
And, yes, for the whole year. And my, my assistant only worked four days.
That's because we have a payroll service. That, that makes common sense.
There's still tons to do. There's still tons of that. I mean, payrolls are small.
Did we spend ten or no?
On what?
On Mary Ellen.
One thousand.
Just one thousand?
Right, but we've, we've spent ten over, over the years.
Okay.
We've spent ten, uh, with the, we've allotted.
She went to, she went to a four-day work week early on, so, um, that's why I say I've come in under budget every year.
Yeah, we get to make the budget.
Yes.
What? We make our budget. So it's easy to come under budget if you're making your own budget.
I don't know what you mean.
Like if you budget forty grand, you spend twenty, then you come in under budget. If you budget fifty, you come in, it's one year coming in under budget.
But I'm saying we come in under budget every year. I mean, it's, this year I need a little bit more money for some of the stuff going on, so that's what I'm asking.
What did, what would, what was the budget last year?
Uh, it's like twenty, around twenty.
And the other part too is we're not sure where we're going with the fire department. You know, Rich has expressed that he may wanna hire someone to do the work that he was expecting from your office. And I haven't personally spoken to him, but that was what he was, because he pays half of her salary out of his budget as well. And he's looking at, I don't know if he still was, but when we had discussed that he was looking at maybe hiring somebody to do the work that, uh,
The office isn't giving her.
the prior office did. So that's what I'm saying.
Has he talked to you about that, Todd?
Not lately, no. And I think that he and I have a pretty good plan worked out. So, I mean, I'd be happy to discuss that with you, you know, I just.
Okay.
I just don't think it's appropriate to talk about someone's personal life or what they wanna do.
Oh, no, we're not. No, we're not talking, we're talking business.
I'm just saying, I'm in, I mean, I'm in contact with the fire chief, uh, weekly for sort of.
Right, well, I'm just saying this conversation yet, I mean, whether it was on or off, regardless.
But I'd like to say I'm really proud of what Kelly has done. My assistant, she's worked hard and it's, it's been, uh, you know, it's been a long process, but she's come, she's come along really well. And, uh, and, but you know, she is nearing retirement age and, and we wanna kinda have a game plan for that. Not just have somebody walk off and start all over again. Because even if you're a C P A, uh, it doesn't matter who you are. Fund accounting unless you've done it, unless you actually worked for government. Most people that do, I mean, when you look at Plain or Jackson, or, you know, any of the bigger townships, we're not as big as them.
No, we don't have the budget they have.
We don't, but we have, we have a big budget compared to some towns.
But that doesn't mean we have to spend it on admin. But that doesn't mean we have to spend it on admin. Look at our road department. We started with seven people. We're down to four.
Might even have a bunch of part timers. I mean, that's not.
Just for snow. Just for snow. We have three part timers for snow. I'm saying is when we had six road workers and a manager when you and I started. And we've got that down to four people, including the super. So we've cut out enormous expense. And that money goes back into the roads. So we're, we're just trying to be cost effective and efficient.
Can we approve this budget here or do we have to prove it in the meeting? The total overall budget then? As far as.
Well, this was a, is considered a special meeting or a work session?
It was a work session, but can we approve it now or do we need to prove it in the main meeting?
Why, don't you wait just to be safer?
Okay.
Okay, okay. So you can, I have no more questions?
You have anything?
Only thing I wanted to bring to your attention, um, from the memo that I sent you earlier. There is an amendment to the funding for the fiscal office assistants effective on the sixth of April. It does give you some flexibility on how to cover some of his personnel expenses. You can do it by supplemental appropriations throughout the year. It doesn't all have to be in a, in a budget document.
Okay.
Got it.
And having, having looked back at that, I think it's to provide for some flexibility.
Yeah.
If something comes up and he needs conditions.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, anything else for the budget? Todd, do you have anything else?
No, I think it's about it. I mean, if you guys, I'm, I'm really happy you guys are participating in the budget process and I assume, are you guys gonna do the same thing?
Yeah, we need to do it. It's supposed to be our, I didn't realize it was our responsibility.
I'm sorry. I mean, I'm happy to help out.
Yeah, so we got it.
Thank you, Todd. Probably adjourned then, right?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to second voting, please. Don?
Yes.
George, yes. Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned until seven o'clock.